Okay, great, thank you.
To the tribe of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
So, one change in the agenda, we're going to move the presentation to the end of the agenda in the...
There's actually no presentation. There's an item for discussion on it, that is towards the end, so...
Okay, so that's where we're going to deal with that? There's not a discussion?
Yeah.
Presentation, perfect.
Apologies for the confusion.
Oh, no. Excellent. Okay, so the first thing on the consent calendar, you have some minutes.
I think we're going to do roll call real quick, and then right after roll call, we can move right into consent.
Way to keep him online.
And just as a reminder, can everybody just make sure that they speak into the mic just so Isaac can hear us as well, so. Go ahead, Rosia.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Here.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Vice Chairman Glass?
Here.
Chairman Hewitt?
Here.
Commissioner Seig?
Here.
Commissioner Putnam?
Here.
And Commissioner Phillips?
Here.
Everybody's here, thank you.
Okay, on the consent calendar, everyone having read the minutes, do I have a motion? I don't have a motion fast minutes as well. Okay, the second?
I'll second.
Um, who was, who moved it, I'm sorry? Speaking to the microphone a little bit more.
Glass made the motion.
For what?
Approval of the minutes only.
Can I make a...
Yoli seconded.
Can I make an alteration of the minutes as presented?
Please.
The removal of the word ministerially in the Commissioner business reports. I'm certain, well, I was certain it was a typo until I saw it in a staff report here It should be administratively processed instead of ministerially processed.
I'll second that amendment. Motion.
Thank you. Call for vote?
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Glass?
Yes.
Chairman Hewitt?
Yes.
Commissioner Seig?
Yes.
Commissioner Putnam?
Yes.
And Commissioner Phillips?
Yes.
Thank you for that.
Okay, and, thank you, so now approval of resolutions, you could have a motion for both, Resolution 2111 and 2112.
I also move.
I'll second.
Any comments, changes, suggestions? Seeing none, call for vote, please.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Glass?
Yes.
Chairman Hewitt?
Yes.
Commissioner Seig?
Yes.
Commissioner Putnam?
Yes.
And Commissioner Phillips?
Yes.
Thank you.
So, in the general business section, two of us have to leave for the first one because we live within 500 feet of the proposal, and Chair will be...
Big, hard class.
So, the first item for public hearing, number one, Rosiel, you want to read that?
Yes. So, item number one is requesting for a transient rental license and coastal development permit to allow the renting or leasing of a room with or without table boards in a dwelling unit within a triplex for periods of fewer than 30 consecutive days duration at 124 Number 2 Hiawatha. The owner applicant is Rod Randall and is in the audience, and he wishes to speak on this item. The property is located within the medium density residential zone. The property contains two bedrooms and 1.5 bathrooms, and is developed with a residential use consistent with the general plan, and is allowed under the 2001 growth policy. The property is a three-story structure that contains three units. The lower unit will remain as a year-round rental. The middle unit is the unit applying for a transient rental license, and the top unit was granted a conditional use permit for transient rental in March of 2017. The property manager of the unit is listed as Catalina Island Vacation Rental. The subject property and all surrounding properties are developed with a single and multi-residential units. The requested transient rental license does not involve any physical changes to the existing residence that would adversely affect or be detrimental to adjacent uses, building, and/or structures. The saturation map attached in the staff report indicates that oversaturation will not occur as application complies with the saturation requirements. The proposed project is categorically exempt under Section 15305 of the state's SEQA guidelines, minor alterations in land use limitations. The project requires a coastal development permit, Section 9/8.102B2V of the Avalon Municipal Code. The project is not within the 300-foot appealable zone. City staff has not received any comments in favor or in opposition of the transient rental license. Staff is recommending the planning commission find the project categorically exempt under Section 15305 of the state's SEQA guidelines, minor alteration in land use limitation, adopt the findings necessary as outlined in the staff report to support approval of the coastal development permit, including that the project is not within the 300-foot appealable zone, and find the application is allowed under the 2021 annual growth policy. This concludes my presentation. I am available for any questions. The project representative is in the audience and wishes to speak in this item. One seat chairman, acting chairman opens a public hearing.
Okay, before we open the public hearing, do we have any questions of staff?
I have a question. I don't see anything in the packet, but did anything come in from any neighbors or anything like that?
We did not receive any letters from, in favor or in opposition from surrounding neighbors or anybody.
Thank you.
Any other questions of staff? Okay, we'll open the public hearing. Anyone wish to speak on this matter?
This is my chair. Yeah, thank you, Commissioner. It's great to be able to just share. My wife and I love Avalon. This is six years now we've had the property. We're here all the time, and I've been a guest speaker at the church. In fact, being able to do this will let us use the building for things that would be really good for, I think, the community. One example would be at the end of April, last weekend and start of May, the young adult group from my church is already planning a service project at the church here in Avalon, and they'll be staying in the building. And so, it really works out well to have it available. We're a growing family, first-time grandparents, and love coming over here with my kids and now grandchild, so that's why we're proposing this. We'll continue to be actively involved in the community, and as I approach retirement, this allows for that, and it's exciting stuff, so. Just wanted to introduce myself and share a few words and answer questions if I can. I have talked to my neighbors, and they're supportive. They're, I don't have any neighbors that have been unsupportive.
And Rod, you're doing this just basically because you guys want to use it as well?
I'm sorry, please forgive me.
You're doing this because you'd like to vacation when you're not using it, but other than that, you guys use it as well?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, yeah, the two uses.
And you're currently, the bottom units year-round?
Forgive me, I've been here...
The bottom units being rented year-round, you have three units, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Three units, yeah, and we're redoing the bottom unit, that'll be a year-round rental.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And you just purchased the property as a...
No, we've had it about six years.
Okay, what was the use of the one-year applying going down, number two? What was the use of this before?
About the middle unit? About, there was a tenant there, I think, three years ago.
Okay.
And we've been staying in it since and remodeling it, making it nice.
Do you have any other questions of the applicants?
I'm good, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the public that wishes to speak on this matter?
Oh.
Yeah.
Sorry, there was also a request. I think you forgot to mention that we just wanted to make sure that we're okay with golf cart there. It is up pretty high, so we just wanted to add that to...
I believe in the municipal code, I think it comes...
So, we're okay with that?
Yeah, I believe the municipal code allows for a golf cart, except in certain areas. Those areas are typically on the flats, provided that there's off-street parking.
Great, that was all I was asking.
Thank you for clarifying that, Thomas. And I have a quick question as well for you, Michael. Are we still in the CUP process or licensing?
No, the item before you is actually for a transient rental license, so effective of February 1st of 2021, so of this year, that transition has occurred from a conditional use permit to a transient rental license. The, if approved, the property owner would be required to renew that on an annual basis. We will be coming back to the planning commission within the next month or two to talk a little bit about the renewal process. Right now, the municipal code is a little vague in terms of when that renewal would happen, and so, we'd like to standardize everything and have that effective on the calendar year, similar to the business license. Otherwise, it would be renewable within the 12 months following the date of issue, and you can see we're, from a regulatory standpoint, that that would become quite taxing on staff.
Okay, thank you, Michael.
Is there any more comment from the public on this matter? Well, we'll close the public hearing, discussion.
I'm good.
I'll make a motion to approve this application with the four staff findings.
I'll second.
Call for vote?
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Acting Chairman Glass?
Yes.
Commissioner Seig?
Yes.
Commissioner Putnam?
Yes.
And Commissioner Phillips?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so you want to stand or... Stand or left?
Yes, she's gone.
Wait for her.
Yeah, she's on her way. And Rosia, do we have anybody who needs to recuse themselves for item number two?
Um, yes, we have Commissioner Putnam recusing from this item.
Perfect case. Staff report, please.
Yeah, so the item today, item number two, is a public hearing for a conditional use permit, site plan, and coastal development permit to renovate an existing retail space to an ice cream shop located at 220 Crescent Avenue in Avalon. The project is in the coastal zone and is subject to a coastal development permit. The owner of the project is the Carson Group Enterprise LLC, and the applicant is Sailor's Delight Ice Cream Shop. The property is owned by the Santa Catalina Island Company, and the project is located in the resort recreation zone. This project is categorically exempt under Section 15301D and E2AB of the state SEQA guidelines for existing facilities. The property currently exists as a retail commercial space. The proposed scope of work will renovate and reconfigure the existing commercial space and will consist primarily of cosmetic updates, including the installation of new furnishings and fixtures, equipment, electrical and plumbing upgrades, new florings, the painting of walls, and the addition of a new window on the western side of the building. The proposed use is allowed in the recreation zone as a conditionally permitted use under the municipal code. That site is 9-6.203AE, I mean A3, and it conforms and carries out the certified land use plan for that area. The adjacent uses are commercial, and the proposed change in use will not intensify the use or materially change the pedestrian traffic noise or otherwise negatively impact the adjacent commercial uses. This project does conform to all zoning codes and ordinances with the approved entitlements sought by the application. The project does not create any additional living or transient units, and thus, the requirement under the city's growth policy, as codified in the municipal code, requiring water confirmation of a water allocation is not applicable. The project also constitutes a permissible remodel of an existing commercial structure that's found in our 2021 growth policy as adopted by the city council. I do want to note that the project is in the floodplain as defined by Flood Map 0603C2202F in Zone X. It's an area of minimum flood hazard. The value of the improvements, though, do not exceed 50% of the market value of the structure, and so, the FEMA flood requirements under substantial development or substantial improvement do not apply to this structure. The project will require a coastal development permit under Section 9-8102B2V of the Avalon Municipal Code, as the project is within the 300-foot appealable zone, and the proposed change in use conforms to the certified local coastal plan and complies with all requirements. Right now, the city has not received any comments in favor or opposition of the conditional use permit. Therefore, staff is recommending that the planning commission make the following findings. The first one is to find the project categorically exempt under SEQA Section 15301D and E2AB for existing facilities. Adopt the findings to support a coastal development permit pursuant to the municipal code, Section 9-8.103. Adopt the findings to support the approval of a conditional use permit, and then approve the site plan as proposed with the standard list of conditions. This is also found in your agenda packet for Exhibit A. I do have Carl Schmeck with the Island Company in, and I believe the business owners are available as well, should you have any questions. So, with that, that concludes my report, and I'm also available for any questions.
Before we open the public hearing, do we have any questions for staff? Any questions? Okay, seeing none, going to open the hearing. Anybody would like to speak for, against, or just make comments on this application before us, the applicants or anyone? Okay, seeing none, close the public hearing. Anybody would like a motion, get seconded, then discussion, or general discussion before a motion? I think we've all had ice cream from this location. One time in the past, I don't think anything's changed since then, except for they don't serve ice cream now. Yeah, do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve. I'm excited.
Yeah. Okay, and that's with the recommendations, one through four on the staff report? Excellent. A second?
A second.
Okay, Commissioner Smith? Any comments?
Well, congratulations, opening a new business in COVID is, it's a tough thing, so, thank you. The community thanks you.
Yeah.
Our visitors are going to thank you.
We will all be by.
It's no easy task.
Okay, I'd say that. General discussion. Call for vote?
Commissioner Kennedy?
Build it!
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Glass?
Yes.
Chairman Hewitt?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
And, Smith?
I'm so tired.
Commissioner Seig?
Yes.
And Commissioner Phillips?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion carried. Item number three, please.
Rosia, did we have anybody abstaining from this one?
We do not have any members of the commission abstaining from this item.
Perfect. So, item number three is a public hearing for a conditional use permit, site plan, and coastal development permit to renovate an existing vacant commercial space to a donut shop located at 104 Clarissa Avenue. This is in Avalon as well. The project is in the coastal zone and subject to a coastal development permit. The property currently exists as a vacated commercial space at 104 Clarissa Avenue. The proposed scope of work will renovate and reconfigure the existing commercial space and will consist primarily of cosmetic updates, including the installation of new furnishings, fixtures, and equipment, the removal of two exterior windows, and the installation for a new display window. There will also be a takeout ordering vestibule, kind of similar to the Coney Island, for another visual, where you go in there and order. That'll be created from within the existing space. This property, the owner is the Santa Catalina Island Company, the applicant is John Kellogg, and this is located in the commercial zone. While the previous use was very similar to the currently proposed use, the existing CUP has since expired, as the use has ceased for a consecutive period of one or more years. This is pursuant to our municipal code 9-8.411. The proposed use is allowed under the commercial zone as a conditionally permitted use under our municipal code 9-6.203A3, and conforms and carries out the certified land use plan for the area. The adjacent uses are commercial, and the proposed change will not, in use, will not intensify the use or materially change the pedestrian traffic noise or otherwise negatively impact the adjacent commercial uses. The proposed project will add the new vestibule, which is located within the existing footprint, which will actually assist in helping to mitigate some of that sidewalk congestion as it takes people who are ordering food off the sidewalk and into that ordering area. Further, the offerings of ready-made food will also help to minimize the wait times. Being a donut shop, there's not a lot of preparation that's involved in there, so staff is not anticipating any significant changes or barriers to that. The project does conform to all zoning codes and ordinances within the approved entitlements sought by the application. It also does not create any living or transient units, and as such, the requirement under the city's growth policy, as codified in the municipal code, requiring the confirmation of a water allocation is not applicable. They do already have a finding too by Southern Galloway Edison on that. The project is permissible as a remodel of an existing commercial structure under the 2021 growth policy as adopted by council as well. Similarly to the previous project, this project is also located in the floodplain as defined in a separate map. This one is 06037C2204F, however, it is in Zone AE. The project proposes to renovate approximately 600 square feet of the existing 14,000-square-foot commercial structure, and the value of those improvements, similarly to the previous one, also does not exceed 50% of the market value of that structure, so the substantial improvement threshold is not hit, which do not trigger any additional FEMA floodplain requirements as well. As mentioned, this project does require the coastal development permit, and it is within the 300-appealable zone, and the proposed change in use conforms to the certified local coastal plan and complies with all those requirements as well. So, staff recommends the planning commission make the following four findings. The first one is to find the project categorically exempt under SEQA Section 15301D and E2AB for existing facilities, that the commission adopt the findings to support a coastal development permit pursuant to AMC Section 9-8.103, the commission adopt the findings to support the approval of a conditional use permit, and that the commission approve the site plan as proposed with the standard list of conditions that are found in Exhibit A of your agenda packet as well. I do have, again, Carl Schmeck with the Island Company in the audience, as well as the property owner, should you wish, or the business owners, should you wish to hear from them as well. So, with that, that concludes my report. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for staff before we open the public? I have a question, it's just about, am I able to vote on this? I own a business three doors down. Does it go by that or not? Do you own the building? I do not own the building.
Yeah, my understanding, and Isaac, you can chime in if you heard the question. One of the commissioners has a business three doors down, but does not own the building and likely does not need to recuse himself.
Um, let's see.
I don't think. It has to do with...
I think, yep, I think that's correct. There's not a clear, direct financial impact, and I think that's fine.
Great. It'd be a physical impact of me eating donuts. Totally ruined my health interest system.
No, the good news is, it's closer to your office than my office, and you can bring them up to something.
Any other questions for staff before we... Okay, seeing none, I'm going to open the public hearing. Anybody wishing to testify or provide information?
Testify.
For or against, or provide information? Seeing none, close the public hearing. Anybody would like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the application with the staff list of recommendations.
A second.
I didn't hear a second, I'm sorry.
It was a tie.
All right. Calling for a vote, Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Glass?
Yes.
Chairman Hewitt?
Yes.
Commissioner Seig?
Yes.
Commissioner Putnam?
Yes.
And Commissioner Phillips?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
Michael, when you're ready, item number four, or does anybody...
Item number four, Commissioner Putnam will be abstaining from this item due to a property ownership conflict of interest. Item number four is requesting for a transient rental license and coastal development permit to allow the renting or leasing of a room with or without table boards in a dwelling unit for periods of fewer than 30 consecutive days at 303 Crescent Avenue. The owner and applicant is Renee Brownstein. The project representative is in the audience. The property is located in the commercial zone. This property contains four bedrooms and two bathrooms, and is developed with the residential use consistent with the general plan, is allowed under the 2021 growth policy. The property located at 303 Crescent contains three floors. The first floor is occupied by the local US bank. The second floor is occupied by the Catalina Island Chamber of Commerce, and the third floor is applying to be converted into a transient rental unit. The property manager for this unit is listed as Catalina Island Vacation Rental. The subject property and all surrounding properties are developed with commercial businesses. The saturation map attached in the staff report indicates that the oversaturation will not occur as application complies with the saturation requirements. The proposed project is categorically exempt under Section 15305 of the state's SEQA guidelines, minor alterations in land use limitations. The project requires a coastal development permit under Section 9/8.102B2V of the Avalon Municipal Code. The project is within the 300-foot appealable zone. The city has not received any comments in favor or in opposition of the transient rental license. Staff is recommending the planning commission find the project categorically exempt under Section 15305 of the state's SEQA guidelines, minor alterations in land use limitations, adopt the findings necessary as outlined in the staff report to support approval of the coastal development permit, including that the project is within the 300-foot appealable zone, and find the application is allowed under the 2021 annual growth policy. This concludes my presentation. I am available for any questions, and the project representative is also in the audience.
Okay, before we open the hearing, any questions for staff? Seeing none, open the hearing. Anybody like to speak?
I am Corina, CIVR Catalina Vacation Rentals, and actually, Renee Brownstein could not make it today, so she sent me a letter to read on behalf of hers. Good afternoon to all the board members of City of Avalon. I would like to introduce myself. My name is Renee Brown, clearly, it's not her, it's me with an accent. I am sorry I could not attend, as I would have loved to be there to meet you in person. I am working on a project, and I am out of town. We have enjoyed so many years and have so many wonderful memories on the island, and will look forward to the opportunity of being brand ambassadors for Catalina Island. We have, we take this position with pride and with a strong dedication to the city. We want to keep the island safe and beautiful for generations to come, and our intent is to have people in our home that are like-minded. That is why we have chosen to go with Catalina Island Vacation Rentals, another reason to make sure that all runs smooth. to make sure that all runs smoothly. We are so excited to begin this new venture, become more involved in the community and the events. If you have any questions, please feel free to reach out to me. She's listing her cell phone number, and she's thanking in advance. We are very excited. It's a really neat property. Not sure if anyone's been there through the decades. They've owned it for about 36 years, and finally, just about four months ago, they decided to take this route, so on the behalf of CIVR, we're very excited to say this property on board. It's a gem for Avalon, the beautiful view, and if anything, probably our guests will be a little disturbed that it's right next to the Cheechy Club if it will ever reopen. So there's no residents around.
Thank you.
You have any questions?
Okay. Anybody else in the audience? Nothing online? No phone call?
I have no comments.
Okay. I'm going to close the public hearing. Do you have a motion?
All motion to approve the recommendations.
So move, do I hear a second?
I will second.
Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none? Call for both. Please, Ms. Rosio.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Glass?
Yes.
Chairman Hewer?
Yes.
Commissioner Seig?
Yes.
Commissioner, and Commissioner Phillips?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion carried. The item of discussion? Give me a second.
So good evening, commissioners. The item for you today for discussion is revisit to the definition of a minor renovation. At the last planning commission meeting, there was some discussion about kind of what constitutes minor renovations that would need planning director approval or city staff approval, and what would need to come before the planning commissioner. So we wanted to formally put this on the agenda, and I do have a very brief overview of kind of the history on what's been discussed so far, what those current requirements are, and then really what staff is looking for is direction for where the planning commission would like to take this. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and start this PowerPoint. Maybe? Oh, there it goes. Sorry about that. So just some really quick, brief history of this. The planning commission actually adopted or established, rather, an informal policy back in 1991 to allow some of the minor renovation projects to be administratively approved by planning staff. In November 2016, city council later codified that policy with some minor changes, amending the municipal code on two sections. The first section essentially allows administrative approval of minor renovation projects found in 9-8.203, and then subsequently amended the definition, adding a definition for minor renovation. So if you look at the definition of, or first, if you look at the municipal code under 9-8.204, and this is for A and B, site plans offered for review that contain only minor renovations may be approved or approved with conditions or denied administratively by the planning director. If not by the planning director, the municipal code actually also allows the city manager to appoint another planning designee, provided that the fire chief and the public works director concur in that approval. So there are a couple options in there. When that section of the code refers to minor renovations, the definition that the council adopted in 2016 has a couple stipulations. The first is that for a minor renovation, this is referring to either one of two, three things. One, that the project that is temporary use of land or structure that is permitted, is permitted a use in the zone, so it needs to be a temporary use of that land or a temporary use of that structure, and it has to be permitted. The second one is that it has a specific duration, not to exceed 30 days. In most cases, many of the projects that we are talking about that are coming before the planning commission don't really fall in line with that. Those are continuing to be approved administratively. The following, though, is where I think the planning commission had some additional questions or wanted some additional discussions on that, and that is in regards to minor renovations have to meet the following criteria, and I'm going to go through the criteria, and then I'm going to point out, I think, two of them that is really kind of at the crux of the discussion here. So the first one is that the project only requires approval of a site plan and does not require anything else, such as a variance conditional use permit or coastal development permit, or it doesn't need anything else that would necessitate a planning commission or city council review. The second one is that the project does not create any additional bedrooms or kitchen, that it does not involve the expansion of any walls of the structure resulting in an addition of 70 square feet or more, that the project does not remodel, renovate, or reconstruct more than 25% of the floor area of any commercial or multi-unit structure, and that's one of the key pieces here in that definition, which is a trigger point, unfortunately, for a lot of the recent projects that have come for site plan review. The second, or the next one actually refers to more single-family residential structures, and that that is the project does not remodel, renovate, or reconstruct more than 50% of that floor area for a single-family resident. And then the following have to apply, but are not usually the ones that kind of trigger that site plan coming to planning commission, and that's that the project does not create any fence that's higher than six feet or higher than 42 inches on a corner lot along an adjacent street or inside a setback, that it does not create a structure, a new one, where none previously existed, that it does not alter more than 20% of any side or roof of any structure, that the project does not create a deck, balcony, or overhang, which requires a variance or encroachment permit, that the minor, that there's been no minor renovation project that's been approved or conditionally approved for that site, that's the subject of an application within the 12 months immediately preceding the application, so they don't want to keep adding a major project in incremental steps, and that the project either has no potential for resulting in physical change of the environment directly or indirectly, and is not a project for purposes of SEQUA, and that it does not increase or create any non-conforming condition of use. So this next slide just kind of pulls out, I think, the two that are, I think, the most pertinent to the discussion here from, just kind of based on the discussion from the last meeting, and that's really the two percentage thresholds on how minor project renovations are defined in the municipal code, needing to either hit the 25% of the floor area of a commercial or multi-residential structure, or the 50% of the floor area of any single-family residential structure. And so before I pass that back to the planning commission for any thoughts or directions or discussion, I do want to give Isaac Rosen a brief minute in case he had anything that he'd like to add on that.
I've got nothing to add, Michael. Thank you.
Thank you. Any general comments or discussion?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Michael, for bringing this back to us per my request. We had two applications tonight before us that truly I do not believe needed to be here before us, and I totally understand and respect the fact that Michael is reading the municipal code and has interpreted it in the way he's interpreted it, and he's absolutely correct. Those two projects needed to come before us, as well did my project that was before us at the last meeting, based on the language of the code.
Just for clarification, though, those two also required a conditional use permit, so they had to come back regardless of whether it was for the site plan or not, but I just wanted to make that clarification.
No, no, and I understood that, but based on the site plan side of things, here's my analogy of this whole thing, and maybe I can proffer a suggestion and a recommendation to cure it. As we go through this code, this code is referring to minor alterations and renovations. I'm not big on a couple of magic keywords that we use in our code, and we can correct those keywords or find replacement words for them that are more subjective. An example of that is a minor, you know, somebody's going to tear a wall out, and to one person it may be super minor, and to another, oh my goodness, a wall has just come out of that building. Things like that require the building inspector's approval, so that it's built by code and so on. As I read this code, recognizing that when you roll the clock back, let's go back to where the codes all started and how they've become to be what they are today. Building code was designed and implemented for public safety. It was then morphed into a direction where the intent of building code was, one, keep it safe, and, two, protect the homeowner, and it was frankly to protect the homeowner from builders. And there's a building inspector that keeps an eye on it, because, you know, the guy that owns the property doesn't recognize and know what building code is and how it's supposed to be nailed and put together and so on, and so on and so forth. So as I read this code, we could do a couple of things to make everybody's life easier. When you get down to the nitty-gritty of this thing, it's item D and E of Avalon Municipal Code 9-3.613. D and E are the two triggers that send things back to this commission for things that are not an expansion of footprint, that aren't additions of bedrooms, that don't require process before us that require oversight, things that could be administered by staff in city hall. If you eliminated D and E completely from this, it would solve our problem. However, these are focused around terms of minor renovations. Something else I could proffer in replacement of D and E is that if D exists or E exists, it's no longer a minor renovation, it's now classified as a major renovation, and changes the structure of which the administration on the city's side changes the fee structure when it triggers a major renovation. D and E, neither one of them changed the way this, the property or the effects of this property would affect the owners. Removal in D and E does not do anything to preserve the impact on the community, so there's really no reason to have them in the language, other than the fact that it's a major renovation versus a minor renovation. The D and E has been the trigger of, with the exception of change of use, things of that nature, that would then be triggered for review by the planning commission.
So that's what was confusing to me as well?
And here's, and here's kind of an analogy. We've all driven through town and have seen things in town that were not built very well, you know? There are a handful of handymen in town right now that are doing things and doing work, and it's going under the radar. Those are the things we should be focused on, the city should be focused on, making sure that they're being done by people that are legit and that it's being done right. That being said, it's for an applicant to spend 2,400 bucks to come up here before us, and that could delay a project 60 days based on when the application happens and things go on. We don't want to discourage somebody from doing a remodel. If you had a house on the flats, and I'll just grab a perfect example, you buy a house on the flats, bargain, you sold it to somebody, and they came over and they said, you know what, I can't stand the color of the outside of this place, and I want to get rid of the siding, and I want to put something else in. Now, if you're going to change a window, you got to get a window permit. I mean, that's in the building code. You're going to change the siding, and my wife really likes tile, because she cannot stand vacuuming carpet, and we want to tile the entire inside of the house, guess what? We've hit 50%, a remodel on that place, and it cost that person 2,400 bucks to come up here before us to do cosmetic changes to the home. And I don't think that that was the intent when this thing was penciled.
I agree with you, because I feel like when somebody goes in and they're taking the existing bathroom, nothing's changed, except it's outdated by 30 years, and they want to remove and redo all the tile, all the plumbing, all the fixtures, and just put it back in the exact same order that it was in, or, you know, or move it around in that same existing space with not creating more square footage or less square footage. They want to change carpet to tile or whatnot. I think that is the right for the owners, and that they can go to the office and get the permits that is required to do so, because there are permits that are required to do so, and I feel like that is where the 25 and the 50%, then it gets flat. To me, it's just a flat, but it's, but it's not a major remodel. That kind of stuff is not, that's just a minor, as far as I'm concerned, because they're not changing the existing floor plan or, you know, adding any more square footage or taking away any more square footage, and I think that maybe this was, I've been here for eight years, and this is the first time that this has ever came in front of us, as far as since when, and so it's been, how come it hasn't been?
And to be fair, it should have come before.
Absolutely, absolutely.
So based on the way this, the language of this code is, Michael's absolutely right on it. Everybody that was before us was rightly before us because of these triggers.
And I agree, and I'm just saying, though, how, I mean, educate me on how this all transpired so that we can fix it or continue to, I'm a firm believer following the municipal code. I'm 100% for the municipal code, I'm 100% doing everything above board, getting the permits, paying your permits, your business license, your health department license, your CUP permits, all the permits that is required by the city, because that is building and safety, that's what the city is about, and if we don't continue to do it above board, city is going to be in a big, huge lawsuit. Somebody's going to get hurt, somebody's going to get, you know, something's going to happen, somebody's going to get sick if we can't, you know, keep everything the way, follow the law. But we can't pick and choose. We follow the law, we don't, and we need to make it clear how things are done, because, like I said, I've been here for eight years, and now it's come to our attention, which, thank you, Michael, because it should, absolutely should. Now we need to figure out how we're going to move forward.
Well, I'm just wondering, if you're not changing the existing footprint, what value do we add by reviewing it? You know what I mean? If we go through the process, we're not, we're not moving it for the city or for the homeowner, I mean, nothing more than could be done administratively.
And it would be different if our municipal code had aesthetic and appearance requirements and regulations and things of that nature, and we do not.
Like CCRS type thing.
Right, right. This is the kind of thing that belongs in a homeowners' association filings.
Yeah, and I guess.
And so, and so one of my questions, I think that I want to direct to staff, because I don't have the answer to this, are all of the permits that we issue to somebody that's building something based on the value of the work performed?
That's correct.
There's a fee for the amount.
Okay, so my suggestion of this item triggering from minor to major wouldn't be of any benefit because that denomination of work, scope of work and value would already be triggered by such a permit?
Yeah, the only caveat to that is you could have some pretty substantial improvements, minor improvements, that could trigger a higher assessment value than other improvements. But we, I also wanted to just clarify, we do not have a definition for major. Essentially, anything that doesn't fall within the definition of minor would be, by default, considered a major project or a major renovation, so we don't have any other definition other than one for the minor. And what I've, I'm starting to glean is, there's a couple different options for staff. One of them is to revisit the change. One of them is to revisit the change in the footprint, so if there's no change in the footprint, vis a vis eliminating potentially the municipal code items, D and E of that section, could satisfy that, but would also require them then to continue to follow the rest of those other items.
You know, I have an idea, maybe what the solution might be, getting away from the percentage value, and say, like, if you're not going to change the exterior, and you're not adding a bedroom or a bathroom, or new rooms in a commercial building, then in a way, you're not intensifying the use that might cause external impacts on the neighborhood.
And that's already in here.
And that's just something we don't, no matter what the cost is.
Right.
And to me, that might be a better trigger to when it needs a more thorough review. If we were to get away from the value.
Yeah, and the value has no bearing right now on the minor renovation. That doesn't even play a factor, but I think what I'm hearing from you, because the existing requirements, if you take out D and E, they speak to essentially not creating an additional bedroom or kitchen.
It's already there.
Not expanding exterior walls that result in a 70 square feet or more, not, the one question I would have is, item number H, which talks about the project not altering more than 20 percent of any side or roof of any structure, is that something that you believe would be a, something that they would still need to be subject to, or does that need to get, are you proposing, yeah, or modify it in any way?
Which item, Michael?
It's number H. The project does not alter more than 20 percent of any side or roof of any structure.
I have a question for you, Michael. Do you, in 2016, this was altered, this was changed a little bit, right, this section? So, would you, I know you weren't here in 2016, do you happen to know the history on why it was triggered and changed? Was there something that?
My understanding, and maybe Isaac could shed some additional light, but in talking to Scott Campbell with BB&amp;K, it was that, at the time, the Planning Commission needed some additional consistency in the application of the code, and while they had granted, or had directed staff to, they gave staff some direction on how to process applications that could be done administratively, nothing was ever really codified. And so in 2016, that got codified into the municipal code by the city council.
Well, one thing, think about it. It was an over-the-counter administrative thing that took the Elencanto to the spa. No change there, and it wasn't within 300 feet of the water. So, that...
Right, and I think that's actually an example of, I mean, a good example.
That's why we need to have some definition.
Yeah, and I guess, I still don't see, you know, how our review makes it better. If they have to meet all, they meet the code either way, so administratively or through the Planning Commission, the end result shouldn't be any different.
I agree.
Right. So, all we're doing is slowing the project down a little and increasing the fees, and I agree, even with the same with H, you know, 20 percent of a wall, or the roof of the structure. I think that may have been the concern that apparently hasn't been realized since 2016, or whenever that was adopted. I mean, that may have been a concern at the time it was adopted, but it's not a reality.
And then the site.
So I would even, I would try to whittle away as much as possible.
And I understand completely why that 20, that item is there. So let's grab a home on the flats as an example, and they're going to re-site your house, and it was, you know, a smoking old house, right, but your house is built right up against the guy next to you. Well, while you're going to do the siding on that side of the house, let's pop in a couple of windows and do some other things, and that creates, you know?
Right, but the rules for that don't change if we review it.
That's right. They do not, it doesn't affect us, but that's why I was probably put it.
Right, but this doesn't, yeah, so it's kind of a non-thing, because it doesn't change anything.
And I have another question. It's probably for both the Rocio and Michael. So, when they do confirm their site, their permits administratively through Rocio, does city, the city inspector does go and kind of check in on these?
Yeah, there's a couple of different processes, from the first time the person does an application, typically Rocio, and she can speak more to this, but Rocio contacts our building official, our building official will actually go out there with the plans and do kind of like a field check, just to make sure that what he's observing in the field is what's being reflected in the plans. And then they'll go through, refine those plans, and then do a much more extensive check. He'll go through the papers then, and just look to see where they're at, make sure that what they're proposing is to code, and if there's any things that jump out at him on occasion, sometimes he'll recommend or require an engineer get involved, because footings of a deck, you know, might need some additional structural calculations, or something like that.
So there's a process.
Right, there is a process.
We're there, and it's happening, so.
And he sees it come up, and he corrects it from now.
Correct.
And the area where we're fortunate right now is, we currently have a building inspector that knows his job.
Yeah.
Good, and goes.
Yeah. But there's no guarantee that that lasts forever. We've had some really bad building inspectors in the past. So, that being said, so then continuing on with this, then, so if the commission is so inclined to get rid of that percentage basis of those two items, then there would not be any reason to have item J, which is the way around the 25 and 50 percent, because if you did something 12 months before, what's it matter?
My understanding was J, so I've heard D and E and maybe H can be eliminated. J, I think the fear there was, you start with a small renovation, and then you just keep adding, and adding, and adding, and pretty soon, you've rebuilt your entire house, or your entire commercial structure.
Right. I think, I think when cities do this, what they're doing is, they have a zoning code that's different than the reality on the ground, and they want it, the reality on the ground to change. So they don't want people grandfathered in forever, which is different than here.
Well, and you wouldn't, because the building code is the building code.
No, I mean, in terms of setbacks, or, you know, you name it, like, or design standards, or, I mean, I can see a city that really wants to reform a portion of town. But that's not our goal. You know, ours is really to hopefully people will maintain what they have the best they can, and maximize the use of their commercial property or their property in terms of keeping it clean and safe.
And when they do that work, come see City Hall.
Right, and we have standards, and we're not really remodeling any neighborhoods. And I, that's what this, I believe, is designed to do.
It costs you to come see us.
And I.
In essence, it costs, it costs.
Right, and we don't have values.
And I also believe too, that people, when you were saying that they add, they start doing things that weren't on the site plan, the original approval that was approved, I get that, but most of the contractors here know that they have to come back for checks, and if they add, and then they'll determine whether it has to, okay, now it has to come in front of us if they do something outside of this. I'm, I think most of the contractors that are in front of us are, know the law, know the rules, know the code, and hopefully, you know, we'll continue to be honest and do the right thing. It's the ones that aren't pulling the permits and not doing the right thing is the one we should all be concerned about.
So I'm hearing, then, to come back with a proposed revised ordinance that would refine the definition, eliminating D, E, H, and J. Is that correct?
Correct.
Yes. What are your thoughts?
I'm here to help implement policy. Right, but basically, what it'll do is, it'll put it on staff.
It absolutely will, and, you know, it's, staff is sometimes kind of, in lieu of interpretation, we have to adhere to the municipal code and to the direction of the Planning Commission, and so streamlining the definitions will absolutely not only help the, any business or resident wishing to make improvements, but also streamline the process for staff so that we can get projects in and out, and let the Planning Commission look at major decisions, and helping to guide how development occurs in Avalon.
And I'm glad you brought this to our attention, because this needed to be addressed, and so I think it's important that the community, that we understand, because I didn't understand last, last, I mean, I did, but I didn't, because of the way it said, follow these, and then it added the percentage, and then it threw it back, and it was like, so, thank you.
I have a question, just because I'm new. We'll make this recommendation, and then will this have to go to the council?
Yeah, that's correct. The Planning Committee, we'll take it to the Planning Commission, make sure that, one, the changes that are made are still reflective of Planning Commission's thought process, and then pending that, when we bring this back, we'll have a resolution recommending council adopt an ordinance change. So the soonest that we'll be able to make that happen would be likely to planning, or to a city council in May. We can make these changes, bring this back to the next Planning Commission in April, and then bring that back to council for a decision in May. That way, hopefully, not a lot of other projects are impacted by that.
And probably, when you do bring that here, probably something that would be maybe beneficial to the commission is, let's invite, formally invite, the builders in town so that they understand what we're doing and dealing with, and also the building inspector, get all of the faces in one room. So in the event that there's something on the professional level that we haven't touched or addressed that's a concern, or something on the building official's mind that we haven't talked about, or a concern that we can address, all of those in the same meeting so that we can move the ball down the court smoothly.
I think that's a great idea.
And if it's okay with the Planning Commission, we can also do that prior to bringing this item back, so in the interim, just so that when we present, we can say we reached out to these, to the building community, or the developer community, as well as the building official, and either they're in agreement, or they had some additional changes, and then we can bring that back here, just to help speed the process up.
Michael, do you see any problem with this, with builders coming into town that are not from here? I mean, Pete, and all these others, they know what the rules are, what triggers them having to come in, but you get people that all do it cheaper, and you get a contractor coming over, and they don't know it. Are they just doing it, or do you see that?
No, I mean, as what was, as what was mentioned before, I mean, there are some times where developers either try and skirt, or will, on occasion, plead a mea culpa that they didn't understand the municipal code. We will try to work with them. What we're trying to do is get people back into compliance. In terms of, you know, the requirements here, as some of the commissioners have already pointed out, you know, I don't know if this was applied with the same fidelity in years past, and so some of this is just making sure that, one, everybody has the same fundamental understanding of the municipal code and what those requirements are. And I think that's also where we're encouraging, we've got a really wonderful planning staff, Rocio, and John Gilbert, who are more on the front lines, working with the developers and the community as a whole on a day-to-day basis, and so they're constantly educating through their interactions, and we're seeing kind of, I think, an uptick in compliance more than we've had in the past.
That's great to hear.
Pete, I think that's you. Did you want to, did you have any comments on that?
Hi, I'm here. I thought I was on the order to kind of get some opinion.
Oh, okay.
And, that's why you guys are still on, but I don't know what's taking place yet, so I don't know what to discuss, but I'm going to weigh in and have, throw my two cents, and whatever it is you guys are doing.
Okay, thank you.
For thinking about, talking about.
Any, any, it sounds like you've got good direction, I think we can run with it, yeah, and then before we would adopt any of this, would also, we would have a public hearing and all that stuff, too.
Yeah, this was just a discussion item, and so this is.
To get a feel for it.
It's a direction to kind of work on dotting the i's, crossing the t's, and then bring it back formally for us to review.
Good idea.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, any, I think one thing the city should pay a little attention to right now is, if you go down on Front Street, and this has just happened in the last week, and with masks, with masks, half the people that are over here aren't wearing them anymore. And it seems like our signage on Front Street has gone down, the big banners, and this, that, and the other. I just think if it continues, it'll be gone completely, you'll never regain it again. So, if as a city we want to keep people doing this right now, we should have someone out there saying, hey, I walked down the street today, and I must have saw, 90 percent of the people on Front Street didn't have masks on, at the time I was there. I'm, I'm covered, I'm fine, it's not going to break my heart, but I just look at that, if it continues, by the time summer gets here, everyone's going to say to hell that, you know what I mean, and we're all going to be.
Yeah, I can follow that back up, and speak with the city manager on that, and just make sure that our signage is there, and that enforcement's continuing, so that's an easy fix, absolutely.
I have seen enforcement telling people, hey.
Good, great.
And I think also too, like, the businesses, we still have to comply with the LA County mandates, and we, I know you can't come into our lobby, and I think a lot of the, but yeah, I think Front Street, because.
It just overflowed.
And I also think too, probably with the whole vaccine thing, people, with everybody being vaccinated, they might think they're.
I'd like to take this thing off soon.
But I think also, yeah, I.
I don't want to go back to square one.
I definitely have seen quite a few.
Eric was good enough to remind me twice tonight to pull it back. The humor is, when I put my glasses on and I exhale, boom, I can't see anything.
Can't see with them all.
There's that.
Anybody else? Any announcements? Staff?
Happy St. Patrick's Day.
Happy St. Patrick's Day.
I think Mike had something to say about the city emails.
The what?
The city emails? We talked about that earlier.
Yeah, I was just going to remind, this doesn't have to be on camera, I was just going to remind everybody that their Form 700 for the FPPC is due by April 1st, please make sure you get that in. They do fine $10 a day for every day that is not turned in. If you need any assistance, either Gabby or Rocio can help. All of those forms are sent to your email.
Yeah, I got that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.